All right, you are live.
All right, Doug. Good evening and thank you for joining this May 6th meeting of the Arcata City Council. As you know, the city council meeting is held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We again want to thank the community for their efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19 in Arcata. As the community begins a slow reopening, it will be important for all of us to be attentive and committed to masking in public places, practicing our new social distancing skills and maintaining high disinfection practices. A few teleconference trips before we start. First and most importantly, if you're not actively speaking, please mute your microphone. Second, all votes will be taken through a roll call vote. Lastly, public comment was accepted by email and writing for both specific items on the agenda and general comments. Comments on specific agenda items will be read by staff during that agenda item. You can email public comments to PC@cityofarcada.org. Now, if you want to, right now, if you want them to be read and be recorded as part of the meeting. If you choose, would you please join me for a flag so? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Winkler?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Patino?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pereira? Councilmember Watson?
Karen.
All present.
All right, first is ceremonial matters. I will attempt to read all these. It's on another screen. I hope I don't disconnect this in the process. So, let's see. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, first is National Nurses Week, May 6th through 12th, 2020. Whereas one of America's greatest national assets is its nurses and the human resources they devote towards a healthy humane society. And whereas each year thousands of nurses contribute to the health and well-being of their community. And whereas nurses give patients their time, energy, and ability, providing highly skilled, safe, quality care. And whereas it has long been a tradition in our community for nurses to perform work of the highest quality and to care for the health of others. Now therefore be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Arcata that the week of May 6th through 12th, 2020 is National Nurses Week. The council encourages all residents to acknowledge the important work being done by nurses in caring for the community and to thank them for their dedicated selfless and compassionate efforts. Dated today, May 20, and signed by myself as mayor. And we will be giving this, who will be giving this to them?
We will be sharing that with nurses both at the Open Door Clinic and at a Mad River Hospital.
And as we all recognize that nurses and all the other healthcare professionals are putting their health and their lives on the line. And I deeply appreciate the work that they do and and all that we will be facing in the future to deal with with all the usual serious medical problems that they deal with and also with that extremely dangerous COVID-19 epidemic that we're in right now. And also in line with this is proclamation and recognition of Nestle Hospital Week, May 6th, 10th through 16th, 2020. Whereas the American Hospital Association has proclaimed May 10th through 16th, 2020 as National Hospital Week with the theme, quote, "Where Health Comes First," unquote. And whereas this national healthcare event unites hospitals, healthcare workers, and communities from coast to coast, building enthusiasm and pride in the giving nature of care. And whereas nearly 5,000 American hospitals and over 5.5 million dedicated staff members serve as beacons of hope in their communities. And whereas hospitals today are multi-dimensional facilities encompassing every area of specialization with a focus on wellness and a reach that extends into the communities that they serve. And whereas this commemorative celebration demonstrates that hospitals are foundations of the communities that build and nurture them. Now therefore being proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata that May 10th through 16th, 2020 is National Hospital Week in Arcata. The council recognizes the dedication and contributions that doctors, nurses, technicians, and staff of Mad River Community Hospital and urges all residents to express their appreciation for the people, facilities, and technologies that make the miracle of health possible in our community. Dated today, May 6th, 2020, and signed by myself as mayor. And we will be presenting this to Mad River Hospital.
Yes. And then we just have the one other introduction under ceremonial of our Assistant City Engineer Jess Clifton. So I'll ask our city engineer to do that introduction.
Hi, good evening. This is Nitro. Well, Liam, as you know, Jess, he started at the city as a engine technician two and a half years ago, and since then he has grown into his role. And when we had a vacancy open for our Assistant City Engineer, I think he was the right candidate for the city. He has worked on a lot of city projects in two and a half years. He has accomplished a lot on our sidewalk projects, street projects, waterline projects, and also mainly on ADA compliance projects. And he helped us with our ADA transition plan, which was adopted last year. So we are very much excited to have Jess as our Assistant City Engineer and looking forward to work with him. So if you see him in the city hall or on the streets, please congratulate him and say hi. So Jess is here, here. If you want to say a few words, please, he's smiling.
Um, I'll just say that I am truly flattered by the consideration and the opportunity to take this position and run with it and to try to contribute to the city, you know, for reals as best I can.
Well, Jess, thank you for your contributions to the city and during these very challenging times. Great to have you, Jess. Okay, next is a report by commissions and committees. So on the agenda is annual report by the Parks and Recreation Committee Chair Sheldon Heath.
Thank you very much. First, I just want to report on the city's very successful five weeks of break camp and 10 weeks of multiple summer camp offerings, as well as year-round recreational programs, which continue to be in high demand. Page three of the annual report covers them all in brief. And in 2019, over 21,600 participants were served. And we continue to provide youth development scholarships to income qualifying families. Program events or program fees and event revenues were up. Total field hours were down a bit due to some weather cancellations. Building rental hours are up at over 16,000 hours. Overall revenues for facilities and fields were down, most likely due to requests for nonprofit rates, which the city has generously granted. Recreation grants in 2019 supported youth development and arts programming scholarships, Young Athletes Program, Play Center, and Youth Basketball. 2019 grant funds for parks from an anonymous donor through the Humboldt Area Foundation will help the city complete the footsall court this year. Only fencing and surfacing are needed and are scheduled for this summer. The city continues to partner with numerous community groups to help provide the various programs and amenities we all value. One of our newer collaborations is with the Minor Theater, who provides movies in the ballpark in late summer. In 2019, Parks and Recreation Committee recommendations to the city council included, we supported polling for an open space funding mechanism, parcel tax, and moving it to a vote if polling shows it's likely to be successful. Appointed Jane McGuire as the Parks and Recreation Committee representative to the Plaza Improvement Task Force and provided programming recommendations to the task force. Recommended following the guidelines set forth by the state for all trail and bike ways and revisiting the issue as needed if concerns arise on city trails. Additional 2019 highlights include continued support and community demand for summer camp and year-round recreational programs. Summer camps often sell out in a week and winter break camps sold out in one day. Approved concept and development of 30% design for Redwood Park. Completion of the Valley West Basketball Court. Plaza Improvement Task Force recommendations on programming, beautification, and infrastructure, safety, and economic development improvements. Supported final design for Shea Park and city Phase 1 construction plan for multi-use court and courtyard area. Supported Annie and Mary Trail Planning and Public Engagement Process. Worked with the Forest Management Committee and interested community groups to maintain current mountain biking and disc golf uses as appropriate on the Forsyth property as it is incorporated into the Arcata Community Forest. Completion of bleacher, press box, and ADA improvements to the ballpark. Prior to the COVID-19 situation, the Parks and Rec Committee planned to focus in 2020 on things like supporting ongoing youth and adult recreation programs, including for looking for opportunities to partner with other groups to expand programming options. Complete the footsall development, look for funds to finalize the Carlson Park design and begin implementation. And a grant application to the Wildlife Conservation Board is in process. Explore options for additional recreational improvements and programs in the Valley West area. Support the city in implementing council-approved Plaza Improvement Task Force recommendations. Seek funding for Redwood Park improvements and funds have been applied for and we hope to hear in May as to whether we'll be awarded them. Continue to explore ways to generate additional revenue to support city parks, facilities, and recreation programs, including open space parks ballot measure for the 2020 elections. Reassess the residential construction rate. Complete conceptual planning for the Annie and Mary Trail and seek funding. Identify funding for Shea Park Construction Funds have been applied for and we hope to hear in May about those as well. And then the committee will be meeting again, hopefully in late May, early June, and we will reassess the above priorities. Our sense is that these goals may be more important in light of COVID-19. We are a community that deeply values our parks and open spaces. These places have been vital to our community, sheltering in place as a way to appropriately get exercise to tend both our bodies and our spirits. As the state and county begin to lift the lockdown and measures, our programs and public spaces can be examples for all of us as we as a community transition into a new reality. Parks and Recreation provide essential support for our families and all of our community members will be they will be critical as we develop new standards and teach ourselves how to safely come together under the new COVID-19 restrictions. As always, the committee wants to thank the council for their support in this past year and thank you for your support as we move together into the future. Thank you.
I would like to have questions or comments from from members of the council, council member Pereira, and any comments?
Sheldon, thank you so much for, I mean, providing a great overview and just wanted to say thank you for really articulating the purpose of our parks and open spaces as we move forward and finding ways for parks and recreation to be a way to bring community together, even if there's going to have to be changes in how we facilitate things. So appreciate you sharing that spirit with us and being adaptive as we move forward. So thanks for the work you're all doing.
Thank you. Right, thank you, Councilmember Watson.
Uh, yeah, you know, I really appreciate all the work the committee continues to do, and I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Patino?
Yeah, I had, I had a comment on our packet page 32, your, your appendix two in the, in the report. You know, I'm looking for Carlson Park and I can't, and the Mad River Beach Park thing. And I'm not finding it because the map don't have it on it. So maybe we should get that on there.
Yeah, it's up at the north side, Vice Mayor. I do see what you're talking about on page 32, and we will revise and upgrade that map.
Great, thanks a lot. And thanks for the report. I appreciate all the work you did.
Well, Sheldon, thank you for all the work that you and the committee have been doing that. I'm glad that you're starting to think of ways to be able to continue in modified form under the shelter-in-place or loosening restrictions. So Karen, are there plans now to schedule a specific date for the next meeting of the Parks and Recreation? Recreation Committee?
We have several committees that are going to be meeting in the month of May, so I don't know specifically if Parks and Rec. I know that our Forest Management Committee will be meeting and our Wetlands and Creeks Committee will be meeting because they've got some really pivotal recommendations and review that they typically do this time of year. So we're kind of looking committee by committee. I'm actually going to be putting out some committee protocols around, you know, preferred meetings during the shelter-in-place period while we're still operating on Zoom and looking for ways of public engagement to those meetings that really do need to occur in this period. So. But there are a few things coming up that I think depending on council direction will certainly, I guess, sort of dictate whether or not some of the committees will need to be meeting within the next month as well.
Are there any plans for, for offering activities that can be participated in remotely through Zoom or other teleconference abilities to the public?
Perhaps our Deputy Director Julie Neander, do you have any, I know that the recreation staff have been working on some virtual, they've put several things on our website around, you know, sort of options for safe social distance recreation, but is there anything that you wanted to add, Julie? You are unmuted, but I don't hear you. Can you hear me now? Yes.
I have two mute buttons. I just realized. Sorry. Yes, our gymnastics program has done some videos that they then put online for our gymnastics students so that they could do things at home. So that's one of the things that has been done, as well as what Karen's mentioned, that we have put a lot of things online, both on our rec website and the city's general website for people in terms of outdoor recreation and staying safe. We also are looking at what might be possible for summer camp programs as well as drop-in programs. And considering whether or not it's virtual and or as the lockdown perhaps starts to shift and we are allowed to do more things, how could we offer programming for our community in ways that are safe?
Well, that's good. So that would be, that would be great if the committee could meet in the, in the next month or so and, and plan on how to operate in this new environment and contribute to, continue to contribute to the community. So Sheldon, thank you very much for being here, here live, rather than just seeing, the report was, was excellent. But having you live is also very helpful. So I really appreciate you be, be here live for us in the public. All right. So next is early oral communications. Have we had any communications from the public that have been submitted either on the, in general or at this time?
Mayor, there were no public comments submitted under early oral communications.
Right, next is the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A approved minutes of the city council meeting of March 26, 2020. B, approved the minutes of the city council meeting of April 1st, 2020. C, approved the minutes of the city council meeting of April 13th, 2020. D, approved the minutes of the city council meeting of April 27th, 2020. E, bi-weekly report on general warrants. F, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. G, adopt resolution number 190-69, authorizing the execution of the certifications and assurances and authorized agent forms for the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, LCTOP, for the following projects, AMRTS free fares in the amount of $13,339. H, authorize grant applications to California Wildlife Conservation Board for Carlson Park Mad River access improvements. I, award contract amendment to Ford Leaf Inc. in the amount of $27,077.34 to assist with the plan check for the Isaacson's Arcata Project, authorize a 20% contingency in the amount of $5,415.46 for total potential cost of $32,492.80 for additional plan review if warranted and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. J, approve the procurement process and, and award a purchase contract for the aerator equipment replacement 2020 to Aeration Industries International. Authorize staff to negotiate the contract price not to exceed $298,980 plus 5% contingency of negotiated price contingency not to exceed $14,950 and to work with Aeration Industries International to finalize the contract documents and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents. K, declare GR Sundberg Incorporated, the low bidder for the 2020 Arcata Asphalt right out in inlay project, awarded a construction award for the 2020 asphalt grind out, out and inlay project to GR Sundberg in the amount of $348,186.30 amended from submitted bid amount of $608,766.60 and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And staff has stated that they would like to remove item K. Would any of the council members like to remove an item?
Not for me.
Right, and let's see. And then I will be recusing myself on, on item I. Because I do paid energy consulting work for Danco, the prime contractor for the Isaacson Arcata Project.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar, less item K.
I'll second.
All right, Karen, could you poll the council members?
Councilmember Watson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pereira?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Mayor Winkler?
Aye.
Unanimous.
That passes. So now back to item K, which was removed from the consent calendar.
Uh, yes, so Mayor, in, in sort of the changing landscape around the, the economic status of the city and the COVID-19 response, uh, we are continuing to sort of refine our best practices as we move to review each of the bids that were issued or requests that were issued, you know, prior to our full understanding of the economic impacts of COVID-19. So our city engineer has a revised process that we would like to take this project through, and I will just ask that he describe that for you. Uh, and then we're going to ask And I will just ask that he describe that for you. And then we're going to ask for an alternative recommendation tonight to actually reject all bids on this project. So Engineer Katry.
Yes. Good evening again, Mayor, council members, city staff, and all members of the public watching on TV. As Karen said, this staff report is an update to the original staff report that was passed to your original packet. And as you all know, to maintain our city streets, every year we do grind out in lay project and a slurry project. And every one to two year, we do a big capital reconstruction project. This grindout and inlet project is in preparation for the planned slurry project for the late July twenty twenty. The original bid of bidding for the project was done in February prior to shelter in place or COVID nineteen. And then bid opening was in March twenty sixth, right after the bid opening, we did not award the contract because we were not sure. How our finances were for the street projects existing year and the future year. So we waited for a while. After evaluating the existing funding and the future funding for the streets, we are recommending that we reject all these bids. And authorized us to rebid the project with reduced scope. At this time, we are asking to reduce the scope by fifty percent. If the recommendation is approved today, we will rebid the project and it will be again in front of you in early June where you will have chance to review again. And by that time, hopefully, we will have a better understanding of the economics or the how the funding is going to work. The right now, what we know, we believe that with this much reduction, we will be able to do the project. This project and the other annual paving project. So hence the recommendation to reject the current bids and. Direct the staff to rebid the project with fifty percent reduction, which will be in the range of three hundred thousand dollars instead of six hundred thousand dollars originally we had bid. Thank you. That's all I have staff report. And I ask many questions. I'm here.
Are there any questions or comments from the council at this time?
I do not have any. Thank you.
None from me, Michael.
All right. Were there any comments or questions submitted by the public on this item?
Yes, Mayor Winkler, we received one email to City Manager Deemer from Richard Marx. It reads, my name is Richard Marx and I am an employee of the Construction Industry Task Force Account Council. We are a nonprofit organization that monitors public agency bidding processes. I'm contacting you today to thank the Arcata Building and Engineering Department for the recommendation they will make at tonight's city council meeting to reject the awarding of consent item K. Twenty twenty Arcata asphalt grindout and inlay project. With the change in the amount of funding available, the project scope of work has been changed. Therefore, the project needs to be rebid. I realize that these are challenging times and that the city is in uncharted territory where projects such as this are affected by the economy. I also realize that the city of Arcata Streets funds from taxes are being greatly impacted. And staff projections have to be modified to account for the reduced revenues. In the spirit of fairness and change of the scope of work on this project, it is only appropriate to rebid this job. I thank you in advance for considering the recommendation of the Building and Engineering Department staffed. Richard Marx, Northern Regional Compliance Manager, Construction Industry Force Account Council.
Right, I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to reject all bids and to have this be reopened. And with the new scope.
We have a poll of the members of the council, please.
Council member Watson?
Aye.
Right, I would go ahead and motion on this.
Council member Pereira?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Mayor Watson? I'm sorry, Mayor Winkler?
Aye.
All right, motion is unanimous.
Next is old business and item A. Set date a public hearing for July first, twenty twenty to consider proposed parent and delayed rate adjustments for water and wastewater for fiscal. Years twenty twenty to twenty twenty five. To direct staff to mail notices to the affected property owners and water and wastewater customers is required under the California Constitution. Proposition two eighteen. May have a staff report, please, from Director Andre.
Good evening, Mayor Winkler and members of the city council. Yes, on. March twenty fourth, we discussed the the rate study from Bartle Wells and Associates and the council directed staff to. Calendar this date to come back. To to review the property eighteen rate notice that is attached to your staff report for. Sending out to property owners and water and wastewater customers where they may not be coincident with with the property owners. It's a mailing list of approximately sixty two hundred or no, seven thousand total. So the rate notice attached. Is really the same rates you reviewed at the twenty fourth or March twenty fourth meeting that that we presented to you, the same rate structure. The the rate notice calls for the water rates to be implemented on September first, twenty twenty. And the wastewater rates on January first, twenty twenty one. So that's that's in response to the, you know, the the current COVID situation in terms of delaying and phasing in those rate adjustments. I call them rate adjustments. Because on the water side, some will have their rates go down. Most will have them go up, but industrial and commercial users. Will see a reduction on water as we true up and even out the 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 charges on on the on the base rates. Wastewater rates, it is a it is a increase for a five year period primarily to fund the. Debt service for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. And other capital projects. So. The rates that are attached. We use as the basis for this year's draft budget development process that you're involved in currently in terms of the process of the next fiscal year's budget. But by law, we have to mail this notice out with a minimum of forty five days notice if we're going to schedule a rate hearing. July first is the date, the target date we've chosen. If that works for the city council, that coincides with your regular meeting on July first. Within the the rates. I mentioned for water, it's it's, you know, the cost of service study told us equal volume charges for all customer classes and all water use. That will include city uses too or city facilities. And. The only difference. With this attachment and this rate notice from your previous meeting is we added a a new. Item that we're calling significant commercial unit rate. We have a high existing high strength commercial wastewater rate. This is only touches wastewater. But there are some some entities that that exceed that hot upper limits. And so we asked Bartle Wells to to work with us on. Development and industry standard for. Certain industrial uses or commercial uses that exceed seven hundred. Parts per million on total suspended solids and B O D. Biological oxygen oxygen demand on a per pound basis. So that's provided in in this rates. Notice as well. Ideally, we we want industrial and commercial users to pre-treat their wastes before they are discharged to the treatment plant. That's that's the normal process, but that can't always occur on every every facility. So this is a way to. Even out the cost the city occurs in in accepting that high strength, that extra high strength. I wanted to stress that the existing five dollar permit sewer repair fee. Which is existing depth service for will continue on the the bills on our utility bills until January first. Twenty twenty three and then that. Yes. So the the rates will will be adjusted downward at that point. Terms of environmental review, you know, this this is. It doesn't apply in terms of sequel for the establishment of rate structures, tolls, fares and other charges. And I mentioned that our our budget is our draft budget is crafted around these rates being implemented in terms of covering. Operating. Personnel, capital projects for both the water and the wastewater utility. So I wanted to see if there are any questions on the rates themselves or and the process for setting this this hearing. The the notice attached is is the same form that we have ready to mail. If you approve this this item tonight. We may include a graphic of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade since I have there's some space on the last page. Add that, but it's it's. It's ready to be sent out and. We do tally protests on this because, you know, per for prop two eighteen state law, you know, we we there is a threshold where where rate holders and property owners can and protest these rates. So we'll be collecting those and that'll be part of the hearing. We will also do a legal ad to to for the hearing and publish that as well. I didn't include that in the staff report, but it's it's pretty much. Mirrors the the rate notice that's attached. So. I know the finance directors on on this. Meeting as well. So if you have any questions for or one or both of us, I guess I'll turn it over to the council.
Right. I will now ask for questions from the council by roll call. Vice Mayor Patino?
I have no questions at this time.
Council member Pereira?
The only thing I just wanted to flag. Is is that, you know, for the public hearing notice, you know, it says it's going to be at City Hall and I think similar to. You know, when we had our first. You know, social distancing meeting, we still had a presence at City Hall. So I don't know if it just would be helpful to maybe just add a line underneath to say, you know. That the meeting will be held and with proper social distancing measures as as needed. Just something so that people know that it's, I I I guess I'm skeptical that July first, we're gonna. You know, things are going to look exactly as they were pre COVID nineteen. So I think to let people know that. You know, if they are going to go to City Hall, I mean, one, they obviously know that they can submit by mail. I mean, that's all listed here, but I think for a public hearing when it says where it's physically located to let. I think the public know that, you know, special precautions will will be made and that there's ways for them to. Safely participate if they truly want to go to City Hall. I don't I don't know if that's helpful at all, but.
It's a it's a great point. And for a long time, we had a big. Placeholder there with some language about that, but we we and we will we'll do something this week. That's appropriate. We weren't sure at the time what what we did be, how we would conduct this public hearing. It could be a Zoom one like like tonight. But we'll we'll make sure that we. Make it clear that it's there may be an alternative to the just showing up at City Hall traditional methods.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just add, so staff is anticipating to still try to host a couple of public meetings just to get questions answered. There are obviously significant capital projects associated with both water and sewer, but predominantly on the sewer side. And so we would like to, I mean, those the certainly the one in May is going to be held via Zoom, so we will update that portion of it as well. But I think it's still worth trying the engagement. I know it's been challenging through the COVID nineteen period. But as I think all of us get more comfortable, you know, we'll find additional ways to bring the public into those public meetings before it comes back for a final hearing.
Yeah, thanks for adding that. We have scheduled Thursday, May twenty eighth at six P M. And Tuesday, June second at ten thirty A M. And we'll make sure we detail how to engage in those. Inform or informational meetings, workshops to answer questions and to take comments.
So any questions or comments from Councilmember Watson?
No, thank you.
And I'm glad the council member Pereira brought that up about making sure that we inform the public. Adequately, if there are restrictions in that we will be providing alternatives for the public to participate in these meetings and hearings. Have any? Questions or comments been submitted by the public on this item?
It received no public comments on this item.
Right, I would entertain a motion on on this item.
I'd like to move to set the date of public hearing for July first, twenty twenty. To consider the proposed rate adjustments for water and wastewater for fiscal years twenty through twenty 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 through twenty twenty five. And to direct staff to mail notices to the affected property owners and water and wastewater customers as required under the California Constitution. Eighteen.
Okay.
Could I have a roll call, please, on this motion?
Council member Watson?
Aye.
Council member Pereira?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Mayor Winkler?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Next is new business. Item A, approve amendment. It to the master fee schedules, section thirty two F. Bees for vending on public grounds, one, adding a weekly rate and monthly rate. To the rate schedule and two, adjusting existing vendor rates by Consumer Price Index, C P I. Could I start with the staff report from Director Andre, please?
Yes, Mayor and council members. We're recommending that the city council approve an amendment to the master fee schedule, section thirty two F. Bees for vending on public grounds. And we're asking this to be done ahead of the July likely adoption of the the updated master fee schedule. For this, due to the fact that we we potentially have some interested vendors. Who would like to? Have more than a daily rate. Weekly or monthly. So that's why we're we're bringing this to you ahead of time. Because it seems like it's a timely point for for some vendors. And I just wanted to say that. The changes that are detailed here as kind of attract change in your staff report. Are also contained in the draft master fee schedule that's that goes with your budget. But that wouldn't be implemented until July first. So so currently, we allow for. For vending and 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 the case of the interest is for, you know, food, food truck type vending at at. The Plaza. The Community Park, D Street Neighborhood Center, Alder Grove Marsh and the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary. Perhaps due to, you know, we haven't marketed this as well as could, could be, we, we haven't had a lot of use. If we put these new locations in, I think, two years ago in the master fee schedule. So we're trying to um expand the potential for, for using these spaces for, for vending. And in the case of the interest, it's for um D Street and uh for uh the food truck type, type vending facility. So this staff report simply adds a weekly rate and a monthly rate to the existing language in section thirty-two of the fee schedule. There are some slight adjustments to, in the processing of that vending application. What, those are just C P I increases, the live scan fingerprinting fee. And, and the daily use space for the Plaza and the other spaces on the, on the daily. So um could have a potential, you know, positive impact if, if we have more interested use uh on the public spaces for, for, for vending than we've had. So this is, this is coming to you as, because there is expressed interest at this time in more than the daily, daily rate. So that's, that's all I have, and any questions?
I'll just add quickly, uh, around the D Street Neighborhood Center, the Parks and Rec annual report was, you know, in your uh material tonight, and the total revenue for the D Street Neighborhood Center in twenty nineteen through rentals was just under fifteen thousand, so since we're in budget discussions, um, we are out there trying to find additional sources of revenue. Uh, this particular vendor uh who has moved over to the site on the daily rate right now is Romans, uh, has vacated the Isaacson site to make room for affordable housing, um, and at a monthly rate of five thousand dollars, I mean, that really is gonna bring significant, you know, about six thousand dollars into that D Street site, about a third of our annual revenue that's coming in for the building itself, just in that back parking lot. So that is significant for the city.
All right, I will now ask, ask questions from the council by roll call, so Councilmember Watson, any question or comments on the side?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Pereira?
Uh, no, but I'm prepared to make a motion if that would be entertaining.
Uh, go ahead.
Michael, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Up in there, um. How much money did you say, I'm asking, directed toward Karen, um, how much did you say Roman's gonna pay?
Uh, so they're gonna, yeah, they'll be paying five hundred dollars a month.
Five hundred.
And, yeah, they currently were paying, I think, four hundred and fifty or sixty uh a month at Isaacson's. Uh, and then we're working with them on, you know, utilities and access for bathrooms that they need for their employees and things like that.
Thank you, I just didn't get the number correct, thanks.
So six thousand a year.
Uh, Councilmember Pereira, your motion?
Uh, so I'll make a motion to approve an amendment to the master fee schedule, section thirty-two F, fees for vending on public grounds by one, adding a weekly rate and monthly rate to the fee schedule, and two, adjusting existing vendor rates by the Consumer Price Index, C P I.
Okay.
Were there any comments that were submitted by the public on the side?
Sorry, Mayor Winkler, there were no public comments submitted on this item.
Like that, Karen, could I have a vote by roll call, please?
Councilmember Watson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pereira?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And Mayor Winkler?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Right, um, next is uh under item eleven, public comments, any general public comments that were submitted beyond what we already had received earlier in meeting?
Mayor Winkler, there were no public comments submitted under oral and written communications.
Uh, next is council and staff reports, so item A, Arcade of Police Department update on the implementation of the National Police Foundation's recommendations. Could I have a report from uh Chief Ahern?
Uh, yes, good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and City Staff and Community Members. Um, I had, do have some prepared comments, um, which I will go over, um, but uh you, you have a staff report and also an attachment that really uh gets into a lot of detail about a tremendous volume of work that's been done over the course of the last year and a half uh by the leadership team of the Arcade of Police Department in response to um the criticism, quite frankly, that we received uh due to the, our, our response in the Josiah Lawson murder investigation. Um, but also just in anticipation of what we thought would be some recommendations coming from the National Police Foundation, just based upon best practices and industry standards. So this evening's staff report is an update on the implementation process of all thirty-six recommendations developed by the National Police Foundation to strengthen the operations of the Arcade of Police Department. This is the second reporting out. The first took place on March eighteenth, twenty twenty. During the presentation of that staff report, the Arcade of Police Department identified twenty-seven of the thirty-six recommendations as implemented, with fourteen of those specifically mentioned during that presentation. Those recommendations revolved around establishing command and control at major incidents, developing leadership training, strengthening the investigative capacity of the organization, and establishing protocols for emergency notifications to command staff personnel. This evening's report represents the second reporting out and counts an additional five recommendations as ongoing, but with enough progress made to consider them close to implementation. Among these recommendations are the development of a formal case review process with the Humboldt County District Attorney's Office, the development of a written policy and protocol outlining the duties and responsibilities of every function during the investigative process, the establishment of protocols to respond to emergencies at hospitals, renewed and continued efforts to build trusting relationships with people of color, and to engage Arcata and H S U communities on policies of fair and equitable policing, and work to improve transparency, reporting, and investigations of violations of that policy. Now, originally, um, the police department was going to present to all of you a spreadsheet, color-coded, to indicate at what stage of implementation each recommendation was, however, because of the ongoing review that we've been doing as a leadership team, we continued to determine and that most of the recommendations has, had either been implemented or were close to implementation by the department at the time that the National Police Foundation's report was published. Therefore, we chose instead to include an attachment to this evening's staff report that provides specific information regarding what work was completed in furtherance of each recommendation. In summary, the restructuring of the Arcade of Police Department, the creation of an investigations division, the implementation of the Watch Commander Training Program, and the creation of the Administrative Sergeant Position, are modifications that have positioned the department to be better trained, better prepared, more organized in our response, and more effective in our utilization of personnel than we were, quite frankly, on April fifteenth, twenty seventeen. The value of clarifying roles and responsibilities and establishing clear lines of authority and decision-making in order to identify in all incidents who is in charge cannot be underestimated. These changes underscore how delicate the balance is at times between being prepared or not when responding to an incident of the magnitude of the murder of David Josiah Lawson. These modifications initiated by the A P D's leadership team coincided with many layers of change recommended by the National Police Foundation and developed a more stable foundation of department operations. Of the National Police Foundation recommendations, preparing personnel for leadership positions and the identification of the roles and responsibilities of investigative personnel have been, have been completed. Providing training opportunities for personnel as well as establishing protocols to conduct thorough case review and case management with the D A's office, as well as collaboration with all law enforcement agencies in Humboldt County, those are all in place. Internal accountability systems have been bolstered, as have the use of debriefs and tabletop exercises to continue the process of learning and skill development. A family liaison position has been established, and officers are scheduled to be trained in combat medical care, two recommendations of the National Police Foundation. Systems are now in place to manage information better and to utilize external partners and video to assist the department in communicating with community members during and after critical incidents. In our pursuit of being a community policing organization, first and foremost, the department's relationship with the Humboldt State University community is getting stronger as our partnerships with campus community stakeholders, including H S U administrators, members of the H S U Police Department, and faculty, staff, and students from throughout the university continue to grow. There is still work that needs to be done. In addition to those recommendations, close to full implementation, there are four recommendations that will require additional time to implement. They consist primarily of renewing our commitment to community policing and then exploring further the potential for a consolidated dispatch system with other Humboldt County Public Safety Agencies. The Arcade of Police Department will continue to report out to all of you the progress in implementing all recommendations as we continue the process of improving the organization, a process that will be ongoing as we continue to incorporate best practices and industry standards into the operations of the Arcade of Police Department. This concludes a brief summary of the second reporting out and includes both the staff report and the summary of the implementation status of each recommendation. I would be more than happy to answer any questions you have or to provide additional information. Thank you.
All right, so I will um now ask for questions from the council by roll call, uh, Councilmember Watson?
Um, I don't have any questions right now. Uh, I just wanna say thank you very much to the chief and uh Arcade of Police Department. Um, I know that, uh, even though we're dealing with a lot right now with the, the COVID crisis, it's is something that the department continues to take uh very seriously and work really hard on to make as many improvements as possible, so I'm, I'm really grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Pereira?
Uh, yeah, uh, one, uh, one question I have is under, let's see, recommendation ten point one where it talks about, um, you know, A P D's system of accountability. Um, and in here, uh, you know, it references allegations of misconduct are thoroughly investigated. And I feel like for members of the public, um, getting just a general overview of what that process looks like if they are to file a complaint and how that is investigated, or what, what, what are the follow-up steps that happen from that? I think uh would, would be helpful for members of the public to, to understand.
Yeah, so um, a great question, ma'am, thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll, let me talk specifically about the complaint process first. You know, complaints of misconduct or policy violations is something that we take very seriously as a, as an organization. Transparency is huge, developing uh credibility is um something that we pride ourselves on. And no complaint should ever be minimized. Everyone has a story, and that's why we have a process in place to receive complaints and then to investigate them. And so the process uh is one in which, um, you know, a community member or a third party speaking on behalf of someone else, or something they heard, um, is forwarded to the department from any number of ways. Uh, we do have a, a complaint form that people can fill out. People can contact me as the chief directly through uh my phone number or email. Um, they can walk into the station or, quite frankly, wave, wave down any police officer at any time and, and voice their concern or their complaint. Each complaint is documented, and then those that are investigated are actually um assigned a case number so that we can track that complaint and, and then, and then also track that for purposes later on for data compilation in terms of number of complaints, how many had different types of findings. And then we work very closely with our Assistant City Manager, uh, Donetta Mello on the personnel side. If, in fact, there are sustained policy violations, then we work closely with personnel on determining the most appropriate level of discipline. Uh, throughout this entire process, communication back to the complainant is absolutely essential. One of the recurring themes throughout the National Police Foundation review was the community wasn't sure uh where the police department stood on not only their response, but the investigation itself. And so um the complaint process is, is one that requires communication as well, so that people understand the status, what's being done. And that, that applies to the, the staff member too, on the police department side, who is the subject of the complaint. It's important for us to keep them notified on the status of the investigation and what kind of a timeline uh we're looking at. Um, every complaint that is investigated is investigated from a, a rank that, at least one rank above the subject employee. And we work very closely with the Arcade of Police Association on ensuring that we're following all the um P O Bar protocols, the Police Officer Bill of Rights, um, so that all the due process that is entitled to the employee is provided. And in fact, in the last negotiation process, we extended many of the protections for sworn personnel to our non-sworn personnel in the police department uh as well, because we feel that it is essential to give people every due process right that we can in order to make sure that that is a fair process. We revamped our field training program for additional accountability to make sure that our field training program mirrors the best practices throughout the state of California. Our mission statement is something that is very, very important to us, we refer back to that again for that accountability piece. What is the expectation uh on the part of the department for all the members? And so we really um work hard to ensure that not only do we have a process that works, but that the community understands that that process is in place and that they should utilize that anytime that they feel it's appropriate. And that's where that credibility piece and building relationships within the community, we hope in turn will result in trust that their concerns will be heard and investigated appropriately.
Thank you, Chief Ahern. I really appreciate you going over that, and I think to your point, I, I uh about trust and accountability and that transparency, it reminds me of the, for recommendation nineteen point one that says it's implemented or in progress about A P D renewing and continuing efforts to build open and trusting relationships throughout the community. Um, I, I think um I, I hope in some ways that we always see that as implemented slash in progress, um, because to your point, there are all these different processes um and, and ways that we can build trust, or trust can, can be harmed. And so I just really appreciate all the work that you're doing, your leadership, and um all uh members of E P D are doing to, to build that trust in this community, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
So Vice Mayor Patino, any questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate the uh, the report, and uh hopefully someday uh C H P will get on board and we can all be in one system. Oh, as far as dispatch or, or the CAD system.
Right.
Um, you know, I had a question about, oh, not exactly on this report, but it's uh P D related, um the, the calling out social distancing or uh, let's say uh group meetings that look like they shouldn't be happening, is that a call to the P D to deal with? Are you responding to that? to deal with? Are you responding to that?
We are, sir, and that is a call to us. And, and the reason why I say that is, we really, in, in the last few days, and quite frankly, this was my decision, because I, I felt, I felt like we needed to, for those people who continue to refuse, quite frankly, to follow the health officer's two orders, the first being the shelter in place at home order and the second being the facial covering order. There are some in the community, granted, Arcade has responded as we all knew our community members would. We always set the standard. We always are the model for others to follow, and that is the case. But given the, the manner in which this virus can transmit from person to person, you know, it's imperative that everyone takes their, takes responsibility for their own acts. And until those orders are rescinded, it is a violation. It's a misdemeanor, a violation of the Health and Safety Code to not follow the order of the, of the health officer. And we've prided ourselves on doing education since the middle of March, education and voluntary compliance. But there are some who just refuse to comply. We have received calls recently, in the last couple of weeks, party calls, house party calls, where there's several people not social distancing, not using any kind of PPE, and violating, quite frankly, the orders. And then there are some areas where people are seeking recreation, for example, the skate park. We understand that that is a, you know, a valued piece of property in, in the city of Arcade, but we're asking people for this very short period of time is to do the right thing, but some continue to violate it. So in the last few days, I just thought that it's best that, for those who refuse to comply, we need to start enforcing the order. We've done enough education. And if we come upon a group or an individual who perhaps we haven't had that conversation with, then education is still appropriate. But I wanted to place discretion back into my officer's hands to say, you know, you're out there all day and all night on patrol and responding to these calls. And while education and voluntary compliance is important, if you're seeing people repetitively violating the order, let's enforce it. The second area where we get complaints is from the 24-hour tip line out of the Emergency Operations Center. And so we receive a updated list every day of businesses in Arcade. Not, not every day are there businesses from Arcade that people believe are in violation of the order. But we follow up with them. That, that has been delegated to our investigations unit so that our detectives can go out either in the field or call and follow up with the businesses to make sure that they understand what the rules are. And then lastly, we get a lot of complaints from community members directly. In fact, I got a phone call today from someone who walked into CVS and saw many people not wearing facial coverings in violation of the order. And when they asked the manager to be more proactive about it, the manager was concerned about putting their employee in that position out of fear of being harmed. So I made a commitment to that community member today that I'll go follow up with Evan across the street and just make sure that he knows it's okay to call the police department. We'll, that's our job is to come in and either give that message or conduct the enforcement. We gotta change the behavior to keep our numbers low.
Thanks, Brad. The reason I brought that up is I've been looking at some videos out of New York City of the New York PD having to aggressively deal with non-social distancing people. And I thought, wow, why don't they just hand them a face mask instead of dragging them down on the ground? And if they refuse the mask, then you give them the ticket. But, you know, this will trickle down to us eventually. So it's New York City today. It'll be around here, depending on how long we have it. So I just was concerned about the, your, your attitude and what to do.
Sure. We, although I, I will say this is, is a, we don't anticipate having to use force to make people comply. This is a citable offense. No one's going to go to jail. But at some point, they're going to have to speak to the DA's office and answer to a judge as to why they placed the health and safety of other people in jeopardy because of their flat-out refusal to comply. Now, if they can't afford the mask, and trust me, sir, we've given out masks to many homeless people right here in Arcade who are so appreciative, because that order does apply to the homeless, because the shelter in place does not. And so, you know, we still are compassionate police department. We still believe in people. We listen to their stories, and if we can help them comply, we will. Enforcement really is being reserved for those who are basically saying, I don't believe in it. I'm not going to follow it. I don't care what the health officer says. To me, they're jeopardizing the, the health and safety of other people, and hopefully enforcement will help to change that behavior.
Thank you, and thanks for letting me track off there a little bit.
No, no worries, sir.
As far as members of the public seeing what they believe is misconduct by a police officer, if they want to report that to the police department, can they do that anonymously, or do they have to identify themselves to do that?
No, anonymous complaints are just fine, sir. We will take any complaint in any manner. And we'll get to work on it. So anonymous, we understand why people choose to provide information in that format. The, the priority is to identify whether or not there's misconduct. And then if there is, is to manage that and apply appropriate progressive discipline. We don't want the system and the process in which to file a complaint to be an inhibitor from somebody actually letting us know what their concerns are. We'll take them any day, anytime, from anyone, in any format, in a way that they want to provide us the information. We don't want to force our will on anyone.
There have been some situations in which members of the public have complained to me about specific police officers, but they've been unwilling to, to directly report to the police. So I have, have relayed those complaints, but I'm not sure what to do in those situations.
Well, you know, as an elected official, you know, it's a, I, I would say that, you know, that it is, it does, I'm not surprised that people would share that information with you. But I, I think it's okay to put on your, your community member had at that point and provide me directly, you know, that information, unless you feel like, you know, it should go to, through City Manager Deemer first. I, I would keep the city manager apprised of that if I did receive a concern from a council member that was shared with them, or quite frankly, maybe a concern from any of you. You know, your, your, your opinions, your perspective is just as valuable as anyone else's. But the process will be the same. We're not gonna, we're not gonna treat the complaint differently based upon who we're getting it from. But I want you to feel comfortable, sir, that, you know, if you do receive that information, I, I would be interested in, in having it so that we can do the right thing and evaluate it, report back to the community member, and also hold the staff member accountable if there are sustained findings. So if there's anything that I can do to help facilitate that process, or feel free to, you know, if you wanted to provide, if you, if you think it's, the community member would call me directly, you could provide them my phone number at any time. But in case they don't call me, I would really like to hear about what you heard so that we can follow up and, and do the right thing.
Another question I have is, is relation to, to earthquakes, that there are drills that are, that happen in which they act as if an earthquake or other disaster has, has happened. And there's a field exercise for everyone who would be involved in, in, in dealing with this emergency to fulfill their role. So is there a similar process in the field rather than, in addition to tabletop, where there would actually be police officers going to a simulated crime scene or to a homicide scene and going through all the exercises and actions that they would take in, in responding, dealing with, with members of the public and gathering evidence and, and all those other actions that they would need to take in an actual homicide and homicide investigation?
Right. Great question. And, you know, the implementation, the creation of the administrative sergeant position has really been a game changer for us. When I first came on board, we were trying to manage emergency preparedness from three different positions. But you have to really put that under one umbrella. That person can then delegate responsibilities. But I talked earlier about having clear lines of command and control, accountability, decision-making, and ultimately, what I need to know is who is in charge. Now, on an earthquake, critical incident, I'm going to be in charge. I'll be the incident commander. But creating that administrative sergeant position gave us some latitude to not only help develop the sergeant and their skills, but to really place the responsibility under that position, respond, reporting directly to the patrol lieutenant so that we had more of a seat at table. And so the, the, the major disaster, the earthquake, the Matthew Dam failure, those are facilitated more so on the tabletop. But we did participate in the Matthew Dam Failure Tabletop back in November of 2019. And that was at the US Forestry Building in Eureka. And there had to be, sir, 35-plus agencies that, that were represented. So an invaluable opportunity to be there all day, working in collaboration with agencies representing all public safety entities. But to your question more specifically about what are we doing outside of the classroom? And so what the administrative sergeant has done is it's provided us an additional opportunity to have more of a role in the criminal multi-casualty incident process, CMCI. That is your active shooter. That is your crime of violence. That is your vehicle ramming a crowded group of people intent on killing and maiming multiple people. We've really not only done a lot of work in the classroom, but we have partnered with the Sheriff's Department. There is a, a, an analyst for the Sheriff's Department. His name is Tom Dewey. He's a retired chief from HSUPD. And Tom worked for Arcade PD for many years as well. I want to, I, I also want to go back a little bit. Several years ago, it was Arcade PD with Tom Gooey at the time, who really made active shooter response in Humboldt County relevant, really made it a priority. So it was really in Arcade where it started, that collaborative model, working on protocols and tactics and having a common language so that when Blue Lake Fire showed up alongside Eureka PD at an incident in Arcade where we were the incident commanders and the first on scene, we're all coming off, we're all working off the same playbook. So specifically to Arcade PD, we have hosted three CMCI exercises at Pacific Union School. And these are four-to-six-hour exercises. We hosted two of them in June of 2019. And then we hosted a third in January of 2020. And so in addition to being exposed to a real-life, albeit simulated situation, we also have two members of our department who are part of the instructor cadre, working for Tom Dewey as instructors. And we're also, for every time that these active shooter exercises take place, we send, we assign officers and dispatchers from the police department to participate. So I attended the one on January 4th, along with two of our officers and one of our dispatchers. And so we have, we, many of our employees have attended these exercises. And our goal is to have a cadre of people attending each one. So we're very active in that regard, and we're utilizing those principles as well. For example, at Mad River Community Hospital, where we've worked very closely with them on developing active shooter and violent crime protocols, again, so that when we show up, we all have practiced it. We've tabletop it. We understand what needs to get done. And we're working in unison to really stop people from killing and then to try to save as many lives as we can.
All right, thank you. Well, I appreciate the tremendous efforts that, that you as, as chief and the department have made to respond to the areas of improvement that were identified in the police department report and to keep working on that, both on things that can, can be completed and things that are ongoing as identified by a council member, Pereira. So thank you for that. Karen, have there been any comments that have been submitted by members of the public on this item?
Mayor Winkler, no comments have been submitted on this item.
All right, well, thank you, Chief Ahern.
Thank you all.
Right. Next is other council and staff reports. So I will poll each of the council members. Councilmember Watson, do you have any questions or, or comments, staff reports to the council and the public?
I'll just mention that I'm working with the city manager and some local business owners just to kind of get a conversation going about potentially doing some outside seating to do some transitioning from the current state of things to, you know, hopefully a more ideal state in the future. And also, business owners have also lived in the county, so hopefully something fruitful comes from it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Pereira?
Nothing to report other than this week went public for COVID-19 testing. So members of the public without a doctor referral can sign up to get a test. It's a lovely nose swab that really only slight discomfort. But so folks can go online to LHI.care/covidtesting, or they can call a phone number as well. It's, let's see, 1-888-634-1123. So members of the community can access this community resource to get tested, which will help us as a community better understand as things start to reopen, what's Fred is looking like in our community. So safety for everyone.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Potino.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One, coming from HTA, today we had a meeting, and we have some serious concerns with people riding the bus. Since we have free bus right now, there are lots of people taking advantage of that, and which is fine. But the problem we're having is that they're not necessarily respecting the social distancing of what that's laid out on the buses. And so we are going to have to make some changes because the bus driver is sealed off in a plastic compartment. And people get on the bus in the back. Or there's no fare involved. They just get on. And if they decide they want to sit somewhere that's taped off, they just rip the tape and sit down. So it's become a, an issue, and we're going to have to work on that for our RTS, and probably AMRTS may have the same issue. So anyways, there's that going on. And then I attended the meeting, call-in meeting to Jared Huffman, a Zoom meeting today with him. It was for all the electeds in the county. And it was a great opportunity to talk directly to them, small group. You know, there's probably 70 electeds or more in this county, but only, we only had about six, seven people there. Um, so we had a great opportunity to talk to them directly. And, you know, I asked him to think about as things change for our PD and our society, where some crime goes significantly down and other crime, like domestic violence, arrests for domestic violence, seem to be creeping up, especially in, in other communities. And one of the things that comes up for me is that the domestic violence thing is really a place that we could use some mental health help. And so I asked him if there was some way to get some funding for additional mental health assistance for our PDs as the, this anomaly of uptick domestic violence continues to grow. So, um, anyway, I put, I threw that in there, and then I, I just said, you know, it would be great if we could figure out a way to get renters some relief. Not a stimulus check that goes to everybody, whether you need the money or not, whether you're a renter or not. But some relief from the Fed somehow that applies directly to renters, because they're on the bottom of the economic pyramid. They're the ones that feed all the rest of us. And as they go down, we all go down with them. So really trying to get money injected directly into renters. And so we had a discussion about that. It was great talking to him. And it was a great opportunity to have, close to a one-on-one for half an hour. So, thanks.
So if you have a suggestion for a possible letter that we could send, having to do with what you just brought up, that would be something that we could potentially do. Issued by, if it's in line with the existing legislative program of the city, then the city manager and I could issue it on our own authority, or if it goes beyond that, then we would need to bring it back to the council as an agenda item.
Yeah, I think that maybe we can fine-tune it as a council and find some way to do things. You know, that tax credits, that's easy for the feds to do. It takes so long to get to you. That doesn't immediately help us. And a lot of times, the people that are paying rent don't pay any taxes. So the tax credit's useless for them. So we, again, we had discussion about that. Maybe we, as a council, can talk about it a little bit more. We're going to have another meeting, or he's going to call for another meeting. He asked when, and myself and other people said, please let it be less than a month from now, because things changing so fast. Probably a couple of weeks would be best. So Jared Huffman's office will let us all know like they did with this one. So, thank you.
So if you wanted to suggest some things, or other council members would like to suggest some things as agenda items, then we could consider putting them on the agenda for a future council meeting?
Mayor Winkler, that, I appreciate Vice Mayor Patino bringing up support for renters, because I did want to request that at our next meeting this month, that we put back on the agenda, the the tenant protections that we had passed. I believe we had an end date of May 31st. And I would like us to reevaluate that end date for that emergency ordinance and consider extending it.
Right, then we could go ahead and put that on the agenda. That would be something I would support. So we can go ahead and do that, Karen, then, to have it on. Looks like we would need to have on the agenda for the today is the sixth, so that would be for meeting on the 20th.
We will add that to the agenda for May 20th.
Thank you.
Right. And I don't have anything further to the report. I just have, I think we need to watch very closely actions by Dr. Frankovich in terms of relaxing the the current restrictions and the reactions that we as a council need to take in response to the changes. Then I think that's something that we should consider.
Mayor Winkler?
Yes.
I just wanted to quickly thank Councilmember Patino for attending that meeting with Congressman. I'd signed up for it, but I ended up having to work. So I really appreciate you being present and representing the city. Thank you.
Right. And so with no further comments, then we are adjourned.